Good morning. It's my pleasure as spokesman for the commission to welcome everyone. We will now have our call to order and after that we will have our roll call. Our technology seems to be a little at odds again this morning, so we will revert back to our old procedure of responding by raising your hand at the appropriate time. Mr. Mc Lawhorn has requested to be excused and so after we have our roll call, we will handle that.
Mr. Chairman, can I add that he's at a national conference for ECVC where Pitt County's receiving an award and John Demery is attending as well?
All right. Let's raise our right hand so we can say the roll call. Everyone's here except Mr. Mc Lawhorn's. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now do we have a motion to excuse Mr. Mc Lawhorn?
No move.
Second it.
All in favor indicate by raising your right hand. We now move on to the indication and pledge and let's stand please.
Father, we thank you this morning for your many blessings upon us. We thank you again for this opportunity of assembling together as a community. We thank you, Father, for each one that is here. We pray that you might bless this meeting with the decisions we have to make. We pray, Father, that they would be best for the citizens that we represent. Guide and direct our every thought, our every word, our every effort. We pray also, Father, that you might bless all in our community, that they may all glorify you and everything that we do, Father. These blessings we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Be space to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Manager, are there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Um, no, sir.
Do we have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second. All in favor indicate by raising your right hand. So ordered. Mr. Manager, you got the next order of business?
Yes, next order of business is your public addresses to the board. We have a number of people signed up. If the attorney will read our statement on public addresses, we will then begin reading names to come forward and as folks come forward if you give your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, Pitt County welcomes comments on all matters of public concern. When you're called to the podium, please state your name and address and I will keep your time at three minutes per speaker.
So first we have Dan Mastin.
Good morning, sir.
My name's Dan Mastin. I live at 3607 Cattail Lane. That's in Willow Run subdivision. If you're familiar with this, right off Portertown Road. I bought a house there that was built...
Pull that over a little till you be a little better where you can...
Okay.
Might help a little bit.
Is that better?
Might not be working, but we'll try.
Okay. I bought a house there that was built in 2013. I bought it last year. There was a vacant lot behind me. Actually, two vacant lots behind me, a little bit uphill. As we were moving into the house, Bill Clark started developing the lot behind my lot. I don't know anything about construction. I didn't pay a lot of attention to it, but we found out after the house was complete that he made no provision for stormwater runoff. As a result, every time it rained, my backyard flooded. I contacted Bill Clark Holmes. They sent a fellow out who changed the direction of one of the downspouts and put a splash box under it. And on the other side, they ordered a rollout gutter that is, in my opinion, absolutely worthless. My yard continued to flood. I called Bill Clark Holmes. They put me in somebody's voicemail. He never returned my call. I called my city representative. He got involved in it and he told me that actually it was kind of borderline whether or not Bill Clark was responsible and I'll get to that later. I called downtown. I talked to the city engineering department. They sent a young man out that said, "Well, here's the problem. This wasn't done when they built the house." But that's really not our problem. That's more stormwater removal's problem. I called stormwater removal. They came out. They looked at it and said, "Well, if he'd done this and he'd done that, you wouldn't have a problem." I couldn't do either one of those things because they weren't on my property. They were on Bill Clark's property. I contacted an attorney and talked to him and he sent Bill Clark a letter and Bill Clark, I know he received the letter because it was registered mail, he didn't respond to the letter in any way, shape, or form. I considered that pretty arrogant, to be honest. I made another call to Bill Clark Holmes and a fellow that I talked to on the phone, who I did not get his name, got pretty tense with me and so I just decided not to pursue it any further and went ahead and put in a French string and which resolved my problem. I think what Bill Clark is hanging his hat on, and I don't know that for sure because I've not ever seen him, never talked to him. North Carolina Supreme Court formally adopted the common law doctrine known as the rule of reasonable use with respect to surface water drainage. The rule allows a landowner to make reasonable use of his land even if doing so would alter the flow of surface water thereby harming the neighboring landowners. However, the North Carolina further holds that the liability is...
Thank you, sir.
Pardon?
Thank you.
I'm not done.
I know, but you have got three minutes and this is different than the regular public here and this is the rules of the commission.
Okay.
Appreciate you, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Martha Johnson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Martha Johnson and I live at 230 Beach Cove Drive. I just have a few thoughts I put onto paper for you and I think you all have a copy. Every issue being presented here regarding the rezoning of the Fontana property is very important. However, I live right on the bad curve there. I'm the first house on the right. My neighbors and I have gone out to several accidents to help victims until help arrived. When people come flying around that corner, they blow their horns at us, they put their middle fingers up, they pass on double yellow lines, they have no regard for people pulling out on our side of the road. I guess I just, I've been pondering and I'm, my main concern is why is there a question about building more homes until that road is properly equipped to handle it? We were told it needed to reach 12,000 trips, I guess, per day on that highway before it became widened, but human lives are at stake here and I don't know why there's even a question of building at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, next we have Jim Keitner.
Morning, sir. Glad you see all in your places with bright shiny faces. I have two items. One, I had to bite my tongue at the last meeting because never in my life have I seen such well-prepared professional people treated so shabbily. It was like they were third graders and were told to kiss and make up and then come back and see what happens. The second thing I wanted to mention was the planning commission had voted six to three for this project to be turned down and if all they're gonna do is make shiny maps, multicolored maps, and nobody pays any attention to it, I think one of you should recommend that we disband that whole damn department. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Esther Hammond.
Good morning.
I just wanted to take this time today to speak to the board. I recently was considering my candidacy as a commissioner in District One to be the appointee of Mrs. Huggins. I thus this morning talked with Mr. Davis at the election board and I have decided to refrain from that. And me and Ms. Huggins spoke last week and we are giving 100% of our support to her. I wanted to say to the board that we look forward to working with you in District One. There are a lot of concerns that we have living in that district, but on behalf of Commissioner Hammond and our family and some of the members of District One, we are so thankful and we pray your just wonderful success in the next four years. So I just want to take the time to say that on record. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have Landon Weaver.
Good morning, commissioners. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to thank you as commissioners for looking at our project on Highway 33 as well as staff for taking an exorbitant amount of time to try to get folks to come together with this project. We've put forward some concrete commitments on paper that we've provided to staff and hopefully they've provided that to you as well, trying to get to center. And we've made that effort. We remain willing to talk to any community members, commissioners, staff. We'll do everything that we can to move forward in a positive manner. With that said, I would like to request, if possible, at this meeting to have a vote on our property and try to see if we can limit the further exposure and potential negative impacts to everybody so we could have a decision if you see fit. If not, we understand that. I just would like to see us move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next, Lisa Lawless.
Is there extra time for homeowners association?
Your rules provide that if a member is speaking for a group and the group is identified that the chairman may allow five minutes.
It shouldn't take...
On behalf of a group, if individuals speak for three.
How many is she speaking for?
Homeowners Association.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. My name is Lisa Lawless. I live at 3029 Landing Circle in Moss Bend. I'm representing that homeowners association. At the meeting with Bill Clark Holmes, there was no agreement reached. The overriding topic is safety. Safety concerning traffic and safety concerning flooding. These two issues are the result of density. That's it, density. At the last meeting, you compared our development to the proposed ones by lot size. This is not a fair comparison of the development. Our development will never have more than 20 homes. How you compare 20 homes versus 150 homes is an illogical comparison. Density is the reason that the rezoning should be denied. That is the opinion of your zoning committee and that is the opinion of our community. Since there was no real solution, we would like the opportunity, as Mr. Landon Weaver said, to continue the discussion with Bill Clark Holmes. The commissioners asked us to have faith in compromise and we did. Now listen to the report today and put off the vote until next meeting when our entire community can be here to respond. We were told that this was a 10-year project by Bill Clark. We are asking for two weeks. That's nothing for you. That is zero cost to you and the other commissioners, but that is a chance for you to save face and for us as a community to walk this to a rightful end. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Donna Pritchard.
Donna Pritchard, 108 Farmington Road. I'm also representing a homeowners association of Holly Ridge. And also, if possible, Scott Pritchard has signed up to speak after me and he would like to defer his minutes to me as well.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Scott Pritchard has signed up to speak after me and he would like to defer his minutes to me as well, if that is possible.
Your rules do not allow...
Watch your rules.
Your rules do not allow for deferral of minutes, but if she's speaking on behalf of both of them, then she would be afforded the five.
All right. Go ahead, ma'am.
Before my minute starts though, I would like to ask Commissioner Perkin-Williams, is there any way that you can share additional information to why you removed yourself from this vote? Or are you able to do so?
I prefer not to speak.
Okay. All right. Thank you. To be honest, we're a little surprised that we're here today. Based on the April 23rd meeting, we were informed that we would have till May 21st. And I know there was a little confusion after the end of the vote, but based on the tape, as I watched it myself, there was the question to Commissioner Garris that was your vote to be on the 21st and he responded yes. So therefore, we feel that it's possibility there is a reason why this should be pushed off to the 21st because we kind of wonder why a decision was made that would put the citizens at a disadvantage and not give us the sufficient amount of time to regroup and present the same strong community opposition that we showed at April, on April 23rd. Our frustration is a little bit high in this situation. When we met with the planning board, as previously mentioned, the vote was six to three and it has been recorded as 5-4 and that technicality was never corrected or explained. Second, the citizens, when we attended on the 23rd, we pointed out more reasons that were noted in the future land use plan that supported the denial of this request as opposed to the support of this request. And even though that is so, we were, it was suggested and we went and met with Bill Clark Holmes and tried to come up with a compromise. The proposed compromise that was presented was nothing more than documented what was already said. There was still questions in regards to the screening that was proposed from 33 to the river because of the power lines, even though it could be planted to the west of the power lines in no jeopardy of the easement. And there was no documentation as far as the cost of the homes or the minimum square footage, though the minimum square footage was previously mentioned at 2,000 and Bill Clark himself corrected Landon that night and indicated it would probably be closer to 1,800. I previously sent an email listing each of these topics to you as well as some additional comments. I know it was lengthy, but I hope you did take the time to read it because if you did, you may be asking the same question that we are. How does this constitute a compromise? If Bill Clark Holmes just documented what they already had and not all of the issues without making any concessions, isn't the whole point of a compromise making concessions? We may not have emphasized this as clearly to the board as we, or as to you, as we did the planning board, but we're not against development. We have no issue with Bill Clark developing this property and its current rezoning of rural residential. And Ms. Ward, I believe you pointed out on our lovely poster we had that that was a lot of yellow stars. And yes, that is a lot of yellow stars, but that's exactly the number of homes that Bill Clark is proposing based on his compromise. And the question mark here is a concern of ours as well. That's an additional 80 acres that is owned by Dr. Fontana that is also currently for sale. And our concern is that if this is rezoned rural suburban residential, that Bill Clark has the ability and maybe the desire to purchase the remaining acres and it would be much easier to rezone that if this approval is allowed. I think the most frustrating thing too that we found out about that meeting is from Janice Gallagher, that we are unable to legally hold Bill Clark Holmes to any compromise that we came up with. And so it kind of made it a little pointless. Also, during the discussion of the last meeting, there were some topics that came up during the discussion of voting that we were not allowed to comment on. One was tax revenue. This rezoning request doesn't need to be approved in order for Bill Clark Holmes to develop these parcels. They can connect to sewer and develop this land as it currently is zoned as rural residential, which we previously mentioned, we support with no issue. Also, just last month, Bill Clark Holmes received approval for a preliminary plot of 228 homes going into Winterville, which is also tax revenue for Pitt County. I doubt Bill Clark Holmes, who is developing in Pitt County for over 30 years, would stop developing in Pitt County. If this rezoning is not approved, they will either develop this property as rural residential and move on and continue to buy other properties throughout the county and develop, all of which will contribute to the tax revenue of Pitt County. Regarding the annexation, it was mentioned that we would either probably end up with the county and the city and that we would rather be with you. When asked about the annexation that night of the 23rd, Landon Weaver said, "They always want tax dollars." That's all I can say in regards to Greenville. If Greenville really wanted to annex this property, wouldn't they do it? Why would they go the soft annexation route? It's my understanding that it's because it's not a cost-effective way to service the property and the only way to get that is through continuous limit. And if you do that, you have to come from the north side of the river where that property is zoned rural agriculture. It's also in this flood zone, which both of those are topics that list in the future land use as not being advised. And then they would have to build a bridge. So in closing, the landowner has the right to sell the property. If rezoning remains rural residential, he can and will sell the property. And Bill Clark Holmes has the right to develop the property. If zoning remains rural residential, as previously mentioned, they can still hook up to sewer and develop the property. However, if zoning is changed to suburban residential, this will infringe on our rights to protect our investments and continue to live in a quiet rural setting that we chose, some of us as many as 30 years ago. So for us to be relative happy, to be relatively happy with this outcome, we are asking that this request be denied and the property be developed as rural residential. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have Kristy Stilton.
I too will be representing the entire homeowners association of Beach Cove, so I would also request the five minutes if that's acceptable.
That meets your rules. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Anybody who is in opposition to the rezoning, if you would please stand. Thank you. As you see, commissioners, we have been presented here today after a compromise meeting that was held last week. At the compromise, as you've received the documents, Bill Clark has presented what they consider to be their compromise and we have also presented ours. Ours did get very specific, including we were asking that the number of homes be reduced from 150 down to 75. What we requested is that half of those be on half acre lots and the other half on one acre lots. Your honor, your honor.
Not quite.
Take it. Just take it. Sorry. What we would be requesting here is that when we looked at the two compromises, what Bill Clark had presented ultimately was everything that they had already stated in the last meeting, they just signed it. We had to sit down with all of our homeowners associations and really come to some type of agreement as to what we were going to put forward. And as you can see by the signatures on the back of that page, you can see how many homeowners associations, Highway 33, residents of Simpson, are against this plan in total. And if you think the number of people that are in here today show what the community feels, you have no idea what is behind us behind those doors. Because half of our people, if not all of our people, are outside, at work, on vacation, out of the country, and they are all behind us. They were just unable to make a nine o'clock meeting. And as you've heard in the requests so far, we have requested that this vote be put off until the rest of them can join us. As we heard from County Attorney Janice Gallagher, anything that we had come up to, anything that Mr. Weaver presented, anything that we had presented, none of it would have been legally binding. So at this point, we had decided and had come to the conclusion that any type of compromise as Commissioner Garris had requested, it didn't matter. I mean, even if we did all sit down and say we agree to something, it wasn't going to matter because at the end of the day, once it gets rezoned, anything can happen. And so that was one of our pauses and issues, your honor. Ew, commissioners. I will also tell you that one of the things that we had considered was it's not about the value. And I know the value of the homes keeps coming up and homeowner values and homeowner values and what value of the houses that Mr. Weaver with Bill Clark Holmes was going to build. It's about the amount. As you saw by the stars on that presentation by the Pritchards, the amount of stars is 150. The surrounding neighborhoods only hold a maximum of 20 homes. 20 homes. And Bill Clark Holmes also did present that the value of Country Place, which is located right next to Beach Cove, is much less than what we're discussing as far as Moss Bend, Beach Cove, and Holly Ridge. However, that neighborhood only holds 25 to 30 houses. So again, what we're asking the commissioners to do is to hold the land at the same square footage, the same map that is already presented there. There is a, that's not me. I did have a presentation somewhere.
Ho, ho, ho.
Thank you. Bill Clark Holmes, in their agreement also, it's the other one. Bill Clark Holmes, in their agreement also had agreed to speak with DOT and FEMA. And while we appreciate that, they're already required to do that. So we did not find that to be very much of a compromise when that's a requirement that they already have to have. One of the things that we keep talking about is safety and the safety of the amount of drivers that are going to be there. And I know this is sideways and I apologize. One of the things that we talk about is what that curve entails. The Highway 33 carries a maximum of 13,000 and that's when it needs to be at the four lane road. And I know we keep talking about making it into that four lane road. Right now, it holds 7,600 and that was discussed while we were in our compromise meeting. The approximations of the 230 houses that are being held in Summer Place, and as we know, that development is going in. And as Mr. Weaver said, about half a mile located down from this current proposed area. So half a mile down is a development of 230 homes that are being built. That is not a question. So we are looking at this last 150. At this time, we know that Summer Place was 230 and we're questioning 150 with this new proposed plan. We multiplied that by 10 trips a day. Mr. Rhodes did the math himself. I think it was actually a group effort while we were speaking. And it was 150 homes plus 230 homes times 10 trips a day plus the 7,600 that are already there brought us to a number of 10,040. And why is 10,040 important? Because we discussed the grades that DOT uses in order to develop the road system. Once that grade, right now, we're at a C. A is good, F is bad. Right now, we're at a C. Ultimately, if we get to 10,400, we are at a D. And a 10,400, which is 80% of the 13,000 that would be on that road, when we get to that percentage and we are at a D, there is a problem. Once we develop these 150 plus the 230 plus what already exists, we're at that number. In conclusion, your honor, ugh, commissioners, I'm so sorry. There's talk about tax revenue. There's talk about the 2030 plan. I know that in the 2030 plan, there are some goals that this board has set forward that everyone has talked about. The goals and the objectives are to have adequate transportation options provided to those. We feel that the roads and the system that they are is not going to be adequate. We've also talked about objective number three, protect planned and existing major transportation couriers from premature development. As you've heard, it's not that we're against development. It's not. We know that this land exists. We know the 2030 plan is to develop on it and we cannot argue against that. What we are against is the premature development. This is 2018 and this is the plan use plan of 2030. We're not there yet. The road's not ready, the land is not ready, and the area is not ready to handle it. The resources aren't. Emergency, fire, schools is not ready to handle something of this size. And lastly, we are asking for it to be properly designed. As you heard earlier from the man that spoke about the house that has not been properly designed, that is a fear of ours. We feel that this is going in too early and too fast for our development. In speaking with Mr. Weaver in the timeframe, he stated that it would take four months to get all of the planning done and then it would take six months to put in 25 homes, the first phase that they consider planning in this neighborhood. So within the year, that neighborhood will be up and bigger than all of the neighborhoods around it. We ask that you vote no to rezoning or that you hold our vote until May 21st when the rest of our friends can join us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have Rich Ballot.
Good morning. My name is Rich Ballot. I live at 2997 Landing Circle. I'm a business owner here in town. I employ several hundred residents of Pitt County and quite honestly, I don't like politicians. So you guys rarely will see me at the commissioners' meeting or in general. No disrespect to anyone in here. Just making a fact. I have two issues that I came with this morning. One is the fact that the potential of moving the vote up really bothered me personally because there's other members of our community who are not able to be here. As a business owner, I was able to come off at nine in the morning. So I would definitely request that you push the vote back to the time we originally told, which was 21st, to allow for continued discussions and possibly other proposals to be brought along. The second is the concept that Pitt County doesn't approve it and then the city of Greenville might. We didn't elect the city of Greenville officials. If they, if that's the route it goes, that's the route it goes. But we did elect the gentlemen and ladies in front of me and representing the community that we're... that we're in, we'd like to ask you to vote based on that, not based on a potential of somebody else making a decision. And you never know what could be brought up, legal or otherwise, in between now and then. I'm not going to say much more that hasn't been said, but I definitely request that you delay the vote. And then if you do decide to vote today, that you vote representing the people here, and like others have said, who were not able to come today. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Mary Enders.
My name is Mary Albritton-Andre, and I live at 110 Rivercrest Drive. I'm actually here to read a letter that was addressed to you all at 1:08 a.m., and I doubt you've had time to read it. It's from Mark Mallison, a neighbor of Rivercrest. He says, "To Pitt County Commissioners and to whom it may concern, the May 7th meeting and nine o'clock a.m. meeting time comes as a huge disappointment. The scheduled meeting is inconvenient for the majority of the citizens it will impact. It seems it is convenient for the Commissioners since they already plan to meet. I personally am very disappointed in the majority of the Commissioners. I thought that as elected officials, this group would be working to do what is best for the county. Unfortunately, this does not seem to be the case. First, it's extremely concerning that things seem to be moving at rapid pace after the Planning Board voted 6 to 3 against rezoning in Perrin Fontana property closed Perrin. This would be the first time Commissioners have gone against the Planning Board's recommendation according to the very first meeting. Why would you go against your own Planning Board? If there's a valid reason, I would love to hear it. Secondly, there are obvious safety concerns on Highway 33 where the proposed is located with no clear plan of action. The number of potential homes with this project, combined with current Summer Place project, is a recipe for disaster. I have more faith in the Planning Board, who in my opinion appear to be more proactive in their thought processes, compared to the Commissioners, who as a whole, in my opinion, sure appear to be setting the county up for a big debacle of a mess to later fix in the future. I am sure it's not like Fire Tower Road all over. I sure hope it's not like Fire Tower Road all over again. Thirdly, it is so unfortunate that the majority of the Commissioners recommended for the Bill Clark Homes and concerned residents of surrounding neighborhoods to come together and seek a compromise. It sure appears to me that the meeting on May 2nd, that one, no compromise was reached, and number two, there will be no enforcement of any of the discussed issues. It appears that as elected officials, the Commissioners as a whole are prepared to accept the word of those who have spoken on behalf of Bill Clark Homes. It is my fear that in a year or two, it will be said that Landon spoke out of turn and is no longer with Bill Clark Homes, or some other scapegoat explanation. It appears to me that some of our elected officials are not willing to put in the time to do the right thing. Why would you suggest the two groups come together in the first place if no agreement can be enforced? Isn't it your job to make sure what's best for the county happens? Yes, Jimmy Garris, Beth Ward, and Anna Huggins, it is. You were the first that stepped up and opposed supporting the Planning Board and the Commissioners opposed to voting down the rezoning. Finally, I hope that all voters in Pitt County will pay close attention to this matter and the actions of the elected officials. Can I continue?
Finish it, wrap it up.
Three sentences. Okay. It is extremely disappointing to only see two of the Commissioners make a strong stand to go with the Planning Board's recommendation. Those two should be recognized for doing the right thing, Tom Coulson and Melvin McGlaughorn. I personally thank you for standing up for what is right and hope that you will fight for what is right. Mary Williams, I understand that you recuse yourself from the vote due to a previous issue with Bill Clark Homes. I have to ask you, Ms. Williams, what is best for Pitt County? I respect your honesty in regards to her previous situation, but I ask, don't you think you can do what's right because of the Planning Board's recommendation? Ultimately, if you are supporting your Planning Board, it should not matter who the developer is. I continue. I conclude by thanking you all for your time, and may God guide you in your upcoming decisions. Concerned in Rivercrest, it's signed, Mark M. Mallison.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, the last person we have is Wendy Winstead.
Hey, I'm Wendy Winstead, living, I'm just a nervous wreck, so I'll try not to cry or laugh. I live at 140 Farmington Road in Holly Ridge, so I'm hoping to get five minutes for Holly Ridge, since I'm kind of speaking broadly.
That meet your rules.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you for your continued attention to our overpopulation on Highway 33, and I'd like to preface this by saying, we hope you take the recommendation of the Planning Board and vote that way on the 21st. Before all this is settled, we hope to be made aware of how on earth this plan is in the public's best interest. After much bantering about, I've yet to be made aware of what constitutes best interest. It's surely not the best for Highway 33, not those who live there, nor those who pass through it. For the traffic, we need to see those stats. I'll need to see those stats to believe those numbers have not increased, but only 100 trips per month in the past 13 years. That's how long I've lived in Holly Ridge, and between the Super Walmart, Lowe's Home Improvement, Audi, Phase 2 of River Branch, and the 17 new homes on Jethro Mills Road, I have a hard time grasping that. The berms are nice, but they're not soundproof. 150 houses equals a lot of noise, both being built and being lived in. A lot of what I have focused on is the Tar River. If the plan is to promote water activities, I'm not sure. Looking at that little plate, that little site they had with our little yellow stars on it, I don't know where they're going to park all that jet skis, boats, trailers, because if each one of them has two cars, I just don't think there's any room in that little neighborhood to do that. I just hope somebody starts up some water safety classes for the inexperienced. Landon stated there were three existing other boat launches between Port Terminal and Fontana Land that were highly populated. One, I've been told, is a private owner. One is for approximately 26 homeowners of Valley Landing, and the other is for approximately 49 homeowners of Rivercrest. 150 is highly populated, not a third of that. As for more safety thoughts, I can't see any no-wake zones from where we're located on the river, so neither can the boaters. So it's a free-for-all out there, and most boats are just full steam ahead, just like they're on Highway 33. And in the evenings, apparently, there are some humans that can see in the dark, because they feel no need for any running lights. I hear it all the time. I don't see it, but I hear it. Well, ignorance is their bliss, because just what lies underneath the surface of the mighty tar is frightening. There are large logs, old and new, full trees, lawn chairs, driftwood, metal boat seats, and whole stairs torn off piers. Hurricanes can pollute and clog our waterways with various debris, causing dangerous conditions for the unsuspected boaters, skiers, and fishermen that we currently have, not to mention the influx of over 400 new house dwellers. According to the Army Corps of Engineers, since the Texas floods over a year and a half ago, North Carolina's boat, the Snail, has been between there and Florida, helping them dig out their waterways. That's that boat that comes along and picks up logs. And while I applaud our ability to help out, let's consider the waterways here and work on making ours safe again. I used to ski up and down that river, but I wouldn't now. Probably couldn't now, but I wouldn't now. Since our last meeting, a 911 call on the river resulted in Greenville's Marine wanting to respond. Pac-Tolus has a boat, but apparently, they had some cranking problems that day. The Simpson Fire Department, to which our area pays taxes to support, has no craft for emergencies. I've reached out to them, but I haven't heard back. But Emergency Management Director Alan Everett did mention, when we spoke, that there were some meetings coming up to discuss some other options for our area. Greenville has three boats. Who knew? I didn't know that. One's in Falkland, and two that launch from Port Terminal. But their cutoff is Port Terminal. They're not supposed to come down unless there's extenuating circumstances, and they have a mutual aid agreement with some of the other departments. I don't expect to see Baywatch come bouncing down the embankment, but between the dangerous debris and the inexperienced boaters, someone or something is going to need to patrol our waterways. And I agree with Commissioner Perkins-Williams, who stated during Mr. Everett's presentation on the 23rd, that she wants the citizens to get what they need, the quickest, the fastest, the bestest. In our stretch of the river, that's currently not available. Standing at the entrance of Holly Ridge on Farmington Road, within a half a mile in either direction, there's construction, new houses being built, and those we've decided on voting on on the 21st. Eight to nine years build-out, end phases. Those are the terms we've been hearing. Oh, boy. With 150 houses, the next plus eight years, all we're going to be listening to and feeling is the rumble of heavy equipment moving dirt around, logging trips, felling trees, cutting back large branches, the sweet, sweet smell of asphalt being poured, delivery trucks coming and going, loud hammering and starting and stopping of radial saws, heavy-duty cement trucks. All of this nerve-wracking noise coming from not one side of us, but both sides of us. All those horses in the stables on Farmington are going to have some nervous conditions for sure, and Paul, we're not going to have any peace and quiet. Another recent accident last Monday in the Bad Curve, that wasn't reported. I'll wrap that up. And lastly, I'd like to address the level of community involvement. It was mentioned at the last meeting that Mr. Bill Clark was a community star, and I would just like to say that I'm sure between all of my neighbors on Highway 33, we can run the gambit of nonprofits as far as volunteering, sitting on boards, holding positions, and so we're all community stars, so let's keep that in mind. We've worked hard and invested in our homes, and we have every right to continue to enjoy our rural community on the outskirts of town with its existing zoning mandates. We don't need riskier driving conditions on Highway 33, and I respectfully request that other big developers looking to cash in by overpopulating our tranquil community need to go and search for some other plots of dirt to squeeze houses on top of and leave our woodlands full of wildlife and scenic banks of the Tar River alone. So build within our zoning restrictions or find somewhere else to build. And I would like to thank Mr. R.J. Hammack on the planning and all of the Planning Board, and several members of the county employees that have helped with some videos I needed and any assistance I needed. So thank you, and we appreciate your.
Thank you, ma'am.
That concludes the public addresses to the board. On that matter, if there's nothing else, we move on to items to report, the second item under items to report. You have the next meeting dates. You have May 21st will be your next regular meeting at 6:00 p.m. The next reference date of June 5th is actually the public hearing date on the budget, and that'll be at 7:00 p.m. The day before that, on June 4th, you have your regular meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item B, just remind the board, we have County Assembly Day coming up on May 30th, and if you're interested in attending that with the NCACC, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, let our deputy clerk know and we'll get you signed up. Have a couple other things to announce that are not on the agenda for items to report, one being that our Public Information Office received three different awards at a state conference through the NC3C, the North Carolina City and County Communicators. They got first place for the Printed Publications Program or Activity Catalog, first place in the Printed Publications CAFER or Similar Financial Report category, and second place in the Social Media Best Campaign Use of Social Media for a one-time event. Item D, I'm calling it item D, want to make the board aware that our Public Health Director, Dr. John Morrow, has been appointed by Governor Roy Cooper to serve on the North Carolina Institute of Medicine. We'd like to congratulate him for that appointment. And a couple other items. Want to note that the Pitt County, through the North Carolina Department of Labor, has received annual safety achievement awards as annually given out. I'll read these real quickly. First place year gold, Pitt County Animal Shelter, first year gold, Pitt County Detention Center. First place silver, Pitt County Public Health. Third year consecutive silver, Pitt County Buildings and Grounds. Third year consecutive silver, Solid Waste. Second year consecutive silver, Pitt County Sheriff's Office. First year silver, paths of the Pitt Area Transportation System. And lastly, our first year silver, Pitt County General Government overall. I then have an announcement regarding PGV. The Pitt Greenville Airport, they are going to be, the Pitt Greenville Airport Board of Directors is, Pitt Greenville Airport is half quote owned by the city and half owned by the county and is operated by an independent authority, which both boards appoint half of the members to it. The airport authority is looking at rebranding itself, and in terms of the name PGV, the Pitt Greenville Airport, Commissioner Garris serves on that board, and my understanding is they're seeking both the county commissioners and the Greenville city councils, seeking consensus to seek a rebranding, renaming of the airport for marketing purposes, and would like the board's consent on that. They're also going to be holding public input sessions on May 22nd and May 23rd, which I believe is a Tuesday and Wednesday, and they're asking for the Board of Commissioners to consider signing up and attending. This will be at the Hilton, and Commissioner Garris, do you remember what time that was?
Yes. In fact, I think everyone received an email invitation. If they didn't make sure that this is in our Friday packet, but those meetings are going to be the 22nd and 23rd. On the 22nd of May, it's going to be three meetings, 10:00, 12:00, and 2:00. And then on Wednesday, the 23rd, it's going to be one meeting at 8:00 a.m., and they're going to be at the Hilton. And please sign up to attend one of those sessions, and I invite anybody in the public to attend these meetings. They're going to be open, and what we're trying to do is to look at all options that we can pursue to increase the carriers at our airport. You know, we only have the one, and we've got to be using that airport to justify another carrier coming in. So this is a regional approach to try to get all of us in Pitt County to use it. We do have jet service out there now, so that is more reliable than the prop service we had before, and we are increasing over the summer months to five flights a day. So if you're planning on flying this summer, make sure you fly out of PGV. And attend one of these meetings. There's our input.
And just to add on to that, Commissioner Garris may have said this, but PGV has gone back to the jet service versus the propeller planes. The dependability and reliability of that is marketably improved, so we would encourage local folks to fly PGV rather than drive to joining airport in another area. One last item, I believe we need to go back to the Bill Clark Holmes report. James Scherz has a report to give on that from the community meeting from a staff perspective. But one last item, the Planning Department asked me to announce that they are applying for a grant to support homeless services, and this is going to require a 25% match, which can be done through in-kind services. So they'll be applying for that to help assist in those efforts. So Mr. Chairman, if you would allow Mr. Rhodes to recap.
All right, Mr. Rhodes.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As requested at your last meeting, staff helped organize a community meeting between representatives of the adjacent homeowners' associations there in close proximity to the rezoning request by Bill Clark Homes on NC33 East. This was all in hopes to come into a better agreement about some of the different items that had been listed as far as concerns with that particular development proposal. So with that, just to orient you a bit, you've seen some maps and had some other information provided earlier. This is just advisory of the location, and you can see this particular parcel that's under request for rezoning. It's about 67 and a half acres, located just adjacent and to the east of Simpson's extraterritorial jurisdiction. You can see the city of Greenville contiguous area here, just north of the river, and also a satellite annexation by Grimesland a bit further down NC33 East. This map designates the zoning areas that are being looked at. Of course, right now, the request is to go from rural residential, which is the light green, to suburban residential. It is just adjacent to Simpson's zoning districts in that area as well. So just to recap, some of the actions to date, back at the March 21st meeting, planning staff did propose and recommend its support of the rezoning request. The Planning Board, with a split vote, recommended for denial. They did indicate that it was consistent with the land use plan, but nonetheless moved forward with recommending denial. At the April 23rd Commissioner meeting, your last meeting, the board held a public hearing here, heard from a number of individuals in close proximity to the rezoning request, as well as from Bill Clark Homes, and requested staff to assist with organizing a community meeting, and that was held last Wednesday, May 2nd. At that time, and you've got in your package for today, you've got both written comments from Bill Clark Homes, as well as those from the representative homeowners' associations, and that's in your package for consideration. and that's in your package for consideration. As you can tell, on the agenda that was also included in your package, there were, I'll say, four major areas that were of concern that were discussed that night, housing and lot size, again, Bill Clark Holmes, as been indicated before, has indicated not going above 150 lots on the proposed site. If you want to equate that as far as a net number of units per acre, that's a bit over two per acre. The lot sizes, according to our zoning ordinance, will not go below 12,500 square feet. The transportation and traffic issues, number one with internal to the subdivision, those are proposed public streets. Also, external on NC-33, there will be discussions with NCDOT. We also have collected information from our Metropolitan Planning Organization about what the current status is for NC-33, and it's already been indicated it is at a Level C, which is a passing grade of sorts for the current traffic that's on that highway. That is not to indicate there are times during the day that there may be concerns there as far as rush hour traffic and some of those concerns, as well as some school traffic, of course. Environmental concerns, I'd have to say this is probably one area, there were some concessions made, if you've noticed on the map, and I'll flip to it here, that was included in your package today, this was provided by Bill Clark Holmes at the meeting. The area shown in pink is a repair and buffer that is required to be retained through the development process. This map is oriented north being to the right side, so just know this is the Tar River, which is to the north, so the area along the Tar River, also along Phillipi Branch, that actually is the border between this proposed development and Moss Bend, you can see that area will be retained. Also in green are the berms that is being, that will, are being proposed by Bill Clark Holmes, this is throughout the remainder of the perimeter of the development site, back to the easement area where the overhead electric lines run. So, these areas, there were some concessions there, and again, those areas will be retained, there was a lot of discussion about stormwater management, those areas there, unlike within the Village of Simpson, those areas that are being developed on this site are required to meet our stormwater requirements of Pitt County. Estetix kind of jumped a little bit on that with the berms, those areas not necessarily required for residential development are being proposed by Bill Clark Holmes, and especially at the entryway along NC-33. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that's our report for this morning, to give you an indication that the meeting was held last week, and we're requesting any guidance or direction from here on. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to propose that we put the meeting off, or the final decision until the 21st. Melvin is not here, I think he's an important part of this board and needs to be there. Also, if we would remember that we have night meetings for contentious issues, that was one of the original arguments for having the night meeting, originally we had two morning meetings, and then it was changed a number of years ago. I think this certainly qualifies as a contentious issue, so if we could put it off the 21st, I think that'd be best.
I heartily second that motion.
Is that a motion, Tom?
That is a motion, yes.
All right, and you seconded it?
Yes, I did.
All right, Mr. Garrus.
I have a couple of comments, and then I'm gonna make a substitute motion. There's been some concern and discussion about the motion at our last meeting. I made the motion, so I know what the intent was, and I know what I said, and my motion was, and it's clearly stated in the newspaper this morning, that we would get the two groups together and hopefully come up with a compromise, and then we would get back at our next meeting and take action. The next meeting is this meeting, and I emphasize that three times in my comments, and even in those closing remarks where the 21st date came up, if you will see in the paper again, my last statement there is that this, that this would be carried on at the next meeting. So, I don't really see any need of further delaying action on this project, because the reason for the delay before, and some opposed that, was to try to get the groups together and work out a compromise. It's obvious to me that the meeting was held, but that there was not a compromise, there was not agreement, and of course, that disappoints me, but that's okay. At least the meeting was held and you tried. So I think it's time for us to move forward. The other thing that concerns me about further delaying, it seems to me like the more we delay this, the more accusatory the remarks become. Now, I have several statements here that were made in some of these emails, and I'm not gonna share them, but I'm really concerned about that, I don't think that's healthy for our community, so I think it's time for us to go on and take action. Now, based on that, and also on the fact that we do have a growing community, and we do need additional homes, and I know some say, well, build a home somewhere else, but not build it next to me. Well, that plot of land that could be chosen to build somewhere else, those neighbors may be opposed also. So we need to move forward, and also, by building these additional homes, and I stated this at the last meeting, it will improve our tax base, which will help us meet our goal as county commissioners, to keep our tax rate as low as possible. Now, also, this was not approved by the planning board. Now, and we try to respect the decisions of the planning board, and we normally do, but we do not always follow the recommendation of the planning board. We also have a planning staff who are the paid experts, they are the ones that you pay to recommend things that are appropriate within our community, and our planning staff recommends that we approve this, and they also say that it is consistent with our comprehensive land use plan, and the other thing, this project will be served by SUE, which is a major asset to our community. So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this request to rezone this property from rural residential to suburban residential.
I second that motion.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, we are now open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Tom.
With Melvin absent, Mary recusing herself, I believe that this is not the right time to have a vote. Also, as Jimmy pointed out, the tax base, as I said the last time in response to that same argument, it does not matter whether this development happens or not. If there is a need, homes will be built and the tax base will grow accordingly. This one thing doesn't mean anything. I also have a problem with the fact that the city of Greenville is the one between Simpson and between Grimesland. They're wanting to go out there and mark their territory, I call it the dog and the fire hydrant syndrome, and once they get that, this so-called soft zoning, anybody goes in there, immediately they know that they're going to be annexed by city of Greenville. The city of Greenville is not doing its due diligence, in my opinion, nor is this Greenville Utilities Corporation, because they're not taking care of the properties more closely to their contiguous city limits, and I happen to live in one of them. They are ignoring Cherry Oaks, along with many other subdivisions out there, and yet they're jumping all around here to get more tax base, more tax base. Why are they not coming to us? I don't wanna pay any more taxes than I have to either, but the thing is, they are not doing what they need to do in order to be, to have the city of Greenville, Greenville to be, I'm gonna say, healthy. Satellite zoning was limited to 20% of the contiguous size of the city limits, and until the legislature back in the late 90s, I believe it was, early 2000s, changed that to where it could be unlimited. Because this is, they're saying that it's closer to the contiguous city limits of Greenville, have you driven out to the contiguous city limits that are shown on that map? And between there and the river, it's a flood plain. So how are they gonna, how are they gonna properly service this area? They're gonna have to go through Simpson. What's that say to Simpson, and what does that say to Grimesland? Personally, is I think it ought to be out there in that area, but what happens? They run a sewer line out there, they did that for Grimesland, and now they can tap into it, but here we go. They are not, in my opinion, being responsible. Yeah, they want money, they want a tax base, but that's not necessarily good for the citizens of Pitt County. So I wholeheartedly object to your proposal to have it today. Again, contentious issues were supposed to be handled at night meetings, and I think this flies right in the face of it. When you have this kind of an outpouring, and if we choose to ignore it, shame on us.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I can just clarify, does Mr. Garrus's motion include the two motions in the agenda which would incorporate adopting the consistency statement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion now? This is a substitute motion, right, Mr. Garrus? So we vote on the substitute motion first. All in favor of the substitute motion, raise your right hand.
One, two, three, four, five. That passes.
All opposed, like, sort of. All right, next, Mr. Manager.
This is on the motion of putting it on for 20, in next week.
No, this is...
No, that was...
That died, Mary, because of a substitute motion.
I didn't want to...
Any other questions? Do you need to explain anything to Mary?
I guess I need to know for purposes of the record whether or not she was choosing to vote, or whether or not you were recusing yourself.
I was choosing to give them a chance to have it on the 21st, which is what I thought we were supposed to do, but his motion said, let's vote today.
Yes.
And so, I wanna recuse myself from his motion because of the dispute with the developer.
So the, your minutes will reflect that the motion passes 5 to 2.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Manager, next.
Okay, next you have your items for under consent.
You have a motion for the consent agenda.
If I move...
All in favor in the cap, raise your right hand. All opposed, like, sign. All right, next.
Next you have your items for decision, and the first is a discussion regarding the proposed budget for fiscal year 2018-19. As the board is well aware, you went through a week of budget workshops back in...
In advance.
...April, and do you want to proceed with the matter, or wait till the room clears? Okay. So during your budget workshops, much was discussed about the proposed budget that, as a manager laid before you, and in terms of the follow-ups, there are a number of things that there are follow-ups, we've already provided two of those to you, one was regarding our debt schedule, that was passed out to you, the other was regarding comparable county list, and I believe our finance officer provided a, another way of looking at comparable counties from a tier-two status. A number of other things we have, we wanted to present to you was, there was a question regarding the veteran services, services that are offered here to Pitt County, and we wanted just to, got a very simple explanation as to what we provide compared to what the VA Center provides compared to what the state provides, and we got a chart that's coming out to you, and this will be very brief. So the first part of this chart shows the VA Clinic on Lloyd Boulevard, and basically showing the medical, basically saying that the services provides, medical facility serves veterans needing health care and mental health care needs, doctors, nurses, support staff, it does not represent veterans for VA compensation and pension benefits. Now, you compare this to the state offices, the VA Vet Center on WH Smith Boulevard, it's a counseling facility, serves veterans needing counseling for PTSD and MST, which is military sexual trauma, has PhDs, counselors, and support staff, and again, according to this, does not represent veterans for VA compensation and benefit, pension benefits. The Pitt County Veterans Office is obviously a Department of County Government, the Veteran Service Office serves veterans needing assistance with VA compensation and pension benefits, it compiles and files compensation and pension claims to the VA Regional Offices. So just wanted to provide that clarification on what the different veterans entities in our community do. The other question that came up, and we didn't have a whole lot of follow-up questions, but there was a question about ballot questions, putting something on the ballot for the voters to consider. Janice, can you, are you prepared, can you answer that real quick? You probably can verbalize that better than I can.
Yes, bear with me for one second, the question about whether or not you can put onto your ballot a referendum, and so, the answer to that question is, you cannot put an advisory question on the ballot, so you can't ask the voters generally whether or not they want to approve a tax increase or not approve a tax increase, although there are limited, there are limited circumstances within the general statutes where you can put a question on the ballot.
Special tax to supplement state and county allotments.
Yes, as a special tax to supplement your state and county allotments, and so, I almost kind of read it almost like you have your Development Commission tax, so you can put a referendum on to add an additional tax for a special purpose. So this special purpose would be schools, unlike your special purpose for Development Commission tax. So I think where you were originally going, or where Commissioner Webb was originally going, is could we put this on as a supplemental tax? And the answer to that question is yes, but the answer to the question of, can you just have an advisory question, that's no.
So that is the sum of the budget follow-ups. We did have, I mean, there were a couple commissioners who mentioned some things to us, and we do have, just for your consideration, right now we've got the base budget as presented to you, and if staff can pass out this chart, Brian? Just wanted to give for your consideration, couple things to think about, let this get passed out first. So this chart in the middle column is basically the recommended budget that was presented to you on April the 24th, showing your expenditures at $125,082,007, showing the fund balance appropriation at about $3.4 million, tax rate 69.6, with no reduction or increase in the tax rate. With this, it was as presented. Based upon some individual comments from board members, we looked at two things, the possibility of adding a COLA, now that we've adjusted all the numbers, we've had some input from different departments, public health being one, where we've adjusted their revenues, we've also adjusted some of the other revenues in the budget, so this would add a COLA, it would add six positions to DSS, two of those are through the maintenance of effort, they're county dollars that already are expended in the budget, they're dedicating those dollars to those two positions, we were able to fund four additional of their positions, and Kelly or Denise, or can you provide, Brian, or Brian, you may off the top of your head which four positions those were, or if you can dig, pull those out. But we, so to do this, we had increased the fund balance appropriation by $143,356, and it included balancing and increasing revenues, decreasing some expenditures. So with this revised recommendation, if you were to consider it, you would have budget expenditures at $125,401,000, fund balance appropriation would go up just over $100,000, tax rate remains the same, it would add a 2% COLA beginning January of 2019, it adds six positions, it would reduce expenditures by $298,000, where we've made adjustments, again, increases the fund balance appropriation, that's $100,000, but $142,000, and increase other revenues, we've tweaked other revenues within the budget by $177,000. So just provide that as food for thought, and if the board wants to go back to that middle column to begin the discussion, but wanted to say that we could accommodate the area in yellow if the board was so inclined.
You did put about $900,000 from the sales tax over to the schools for the re-establishment of safety entrance, is that correct?
Yes, sir, we did the $900,000 for the secure corridors, that's coming out of Article 46 sales tax. We also did the repurposed, the repurposed, for PCC, the repurposed dollars within their project funds to allow them to do, I believe, all of their deferred maintenance projects, so it meets all PCC's needs, and talking to Dr. Linker, I think he's pleased with the half a million we're giving them in additional current expense, as well as this close to a million dollars. in additional current expense, as well as this close to a million dollars in Article forty-six for the secured corridors, as well as we're looking at the lobs borrowing, that being a bond borrowing, the limited obligation bond, possibly this summer, to do other projects, the bus cameras, the internal cameras, and other improvements through a lobs borrowing if the board was so inclined. And again, that would be paid for through Article forty-six sales tax as well.
So we could move ahead with this now, Mr. Chairman?
That's just a minute, Charles. So you're asking then, with these additions or these recommended additions, that you'd like for the board to give you permission to have a public hearing on the budget, including these matters? Now, Charles, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, that was, yes, Mr. Garris. One question, Scott, that for the one hundred and forty-two thousand additional fund balance reduction, do we still expect that to fall back into our fund balance so that we won't actually be reducing our fund balance less than at eighteen percent?
Well, as you recall, we're projecting for June thirtieth, the fund balance to be at, I believe, twenty point five, six percent, thereabouts. Well, it's over your goal, it's your stated range of eighteen to twenty. The hundred, the additional one hundred forty-two thousand, we're going to have over collection of revenues, just like we had over collection on the Fed bed revenue by three quarters of a million this year. If we stay on track to exceed the thirty-five federal inmates that we house at the detention center, we will overcollect there. And hopefully, we'll continue to overcollect on our sales tax numbers, just like we have in the current year. So I'm not going to say that we're, my, our projection would be we would definitely remain within your eighteen to twenty percent fund balance goal with this budget we're presenting before you.
Well, the thing I really like about your proposal is that it does include a two percent COLA.
It's delayed, but it does.
I'm very supportive of that.
That's what Melvin wanted to.
Yeah, and that is delayed until January, but it's, at least it's, it's an increase.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you're needing now, do you need anything from this board for you to set up your public hearing on this proposal? Do you need a motion or anything?
No, just to know I have the consensus to move forward to prepare this budget, as in yellow, as adjusted from what I presented in the workshops, to prepare the presentation for the public hearing on June the fifth. That's what I'm seeking.
Does the board have that approval for him? Okay.
Yes, and I just want to reiterate, since we reiterated the COLA in January, I think it's January, that we did hear D S S needs, which were far beyond the six positions, but they're getting six additional positions to move forward with what they have to do for our citizens.
And I met with Ms. Ellie, obviously, and asked her to prioritize those. And we came up with the top six positions that they felt were the most critical, and we will proceed with those. And Brian, do you want to name those off?
Sure, there was a social worker supervisor and child place, social work supervisor number, position three in child placement, a social worker three, child placement and foster care, a social worker three, child placement, foster care, and a social worker three, child placement, child placement preventative services.
She felt those were the most critical needs, and of the, I think, twenty positions she had identified, and were, wish we could do more, but we were able to accommodate that.
I thought with having excess of a hundred million dollars more than the county budget, that the social services wouldn't give us some money.
We tried.
All right, you got your directions on that then, Scott. And I think overall, the budget, as I had said previously, is a very well-presented budget, inclusive of what the needs of this county are about. And with these additions, that's good. All right, having said that, what's the direction of the board in regard to this appointment of juvenile prevention?
Motion to appoint Wendy Hazelton?
I second.
All in favor, and the cape raising your right hand. Appointment to the public health meeting, the public health board.
Motion to appoint Dr. Ladyac Akok.
I second that.
All right, all in favor, and the cape raising your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, just note that is an exception to your appointment policy.
Yeah.
Okay, now, I believe there's a request to go into a closed session. Madam Attorney?
Yes, it has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen point one one A five, in order to discuss matters related to economic development under A four, closed session minutes under A one, and acquisition of real property under A five.
Do you have a motion?
I move.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank y'all. We'll be back. Thank you. We're now back in open session. Mr. Webb, have you got something you want to say?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve our January, oh, not our January, our April twenty-third closed session minutes as to the content of.
I second it.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, is any further business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would move that we approve the option for fifteen thousand dollars for the purchase of the one hundred and twenty-seven point four acres of the Warren property located on the corner of M L K Boulevard and Oak Creek Road.
I second.
All right, any discussion? If not, all in favor, and the cape raising your right hand. So, any further business?
Nope.
Mr. Chairman, I move it return.
Thank you.
I second that.
All right, have a good day. Appreciate it.